I call this meeting to order. Rock Hall, please.
Councilmember Maria Cecilia Cruz.
Present.
Councilmember Matías Rosales. Vice Mayor Luis Cabrera.
Present.
Councilmember Gloria Torres.
Present.
Councilmember Javier Vargas. Councilmember Tadeo Azazel de La Hoya.
Present.
Mayor Nieves Riedel.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, invocation. Pastor Yolanda Urias, Centro Misionero Giree.
Buenas tardes a todos. Gracias señor alcalde y miembros del concilio por la oportunidad que me dan de estar esta tarde presentando esta junta delante de Dios. Romanos 12:1 dice: Porque toda autoridad es puesta por Dios. Entonces toda autoridad aquí representada Dios los ha puesto, por lo tanto nosotros tenemos el compromiso de venir y honrar la vida de ustedes. Gracias por esta oportunidad. Padre en el nombre de Jesús queremos presentar esta reunión delante de ti. Señor aquí están autoridades, aquí estamos ciudadanos. De San Luis, Arizona Dios te pedimos que tú les des la sabiduría, tú les des todo lo que ellos necesitan para venir y ponerse de acuerdo y trabajar juntos para esta reunión. Tu palabra también dice Dios que donde hay dos o tres que ahí estás tú. Habemos mucho más que dos o tres. También nos dice Dios podrán dos caminar juntos si no se ponen de acuerdo primero. Yo te doy gracias, bendecimos señor esta reunión y la paz señor, tu paz sea sobre ella. En el nombre de Jesús señor, lo ponemos en tus manos. Amén y amén.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Item number four, call to the public. This is time for the public to comment. Members of the city council may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda. Therefore, pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.01H, action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. This is time for the public. Is there anyone that wishes to address the mayor and city council?
I would like to set some rules. Okay, there's item number eight-eight. That's from el señor Jesús Ortiz dueño del navegante retiró su petición. Entonces si hay personas aquí que sé que iban a venir personas porque la ciudad recibió cartas que no estaban de acuerdo, este son bienvenidos, gracias por estar aquí, tienen su derecho de venir este y expresarse cuando no están de acuerdo. Pero esta, este asunto se terminó por este momento, el señor retiró su petición. Esa es la primera. La segunda, la segunda es algo un poco controversial y tomando en cuenta los trabajadores de la ciudad que empiezan seis, siete, ocho de la mañana y tienen todo el día y tenemos una agenda bastante larga, en el call to the public hay dos grupos, uno en pro y otro en contra. Les voy a pedir, les voy a proponer que cada grupo escoja un capitán y ese capitán se tome cinco minutos y que se exprese si está a favor, si está contra y estamos hablando del problema que hay con el señor Castro y la iglesia head enemy. Si nos ponemos de acuerdo así todos vamos a salir beneficiados. Si deciden que no es bien también están en todo su derecho, pero los voy a dejar que al último para sacar toda la agenda de trabajo en consideración a los empleados de la ciudad que tienen familias y ya pusieron sus ocho, diez, doce horas. Entonces, ¿qué les parece? Nos ponemos de acuerdo, quieren escoger una persona cada grupo y tomarse sus cinco minutos, entonces de esa manera nos ayuda bastante. ¿Qué dicen? Está bien, un grupo dice que está, están de acuerdo, están de acuerdo. Okay, entonces empezamos con un grupo. ¿Quién quiere ser el primero? Usted señora, pase. Y por favor su nombre, su dirección, es muy importante. Muchas gracias por considerarnos, se agradece.
Mi nombre es Angelica Torres, vivo en el 992, Babilén. Bueno, vengo a exponer mi caso otra vez. El señor Manuel Castro que es el pastor vino a tocar la puerta de nosotros los vecinos el miércoles veinte de septiembre, los que vinimos a la junta el miércoles trece, hacernos una propuesta para que lo apoyemos en dejarlo, que el tráiler venga a su iglesia una o dos horas. Nosotros no estamos de acuerdo porque es un peligro el tráiler. Ya pasó un accidente y él tiene que respetar que hay una ordenanza donde se puede meter el tráiler. Nosotros no estamos de acuerdo, así estamos muy bien sin ruido, ni peligro, ni el tráiler, no aceptamos que lo vuelva a dejar. Tiene que obedecer, ya basta y que por favor ya no nos han de molestando porque nuestra respuesta es no, no más tráilers. El señor Manuel Castro puso en Facebook que ocupaba firmas que por su ministerio estaba en un colapso. Son puras firmas dadas porque él les regalaba una caja de Dátil, cajita chica, porque no es gente que vive cerca de la iglesia y no saben realmente lo que pasa y como todo el tiempo puro negocio. Las firmas que importan son las de nosotros que ahí vivimos diarios, somos sus vecinos cercanos a él y ahora que no está el tráiler y no hay vendimia vivimos tan a gusto, sin ruido ni peligro. No solamente tumbó el cerco de mi casa. El tráiler se metió y faltó un metro y medio para que se metiera a mi sala. Ya lo dije la otra vez, mi nieta de dos años y medio, veinte minutos antes ella andaba jugando, tengo fotos donde ella andaba jugando, mi nieta y para mí yo no estoy de acuerdo que el señor traiga otra vez el tráiler. Yo tengo fotos, todo tengo ahí. No señor, eso fue algo muy serio, por eso no más tráiler, ni una hora, ni dos horas, ni un minuto, ni un segundo. Nadie le está quitando su ministerio, nosotros no le decimos que se vaya a su ministerio pero que se reubique, que lo ponga en una parte donde sea comercial no residencial, donde nosotros vivimos es residencial, no es comercial. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias. La persona que va a hablar, escogen, ¿quién va a ser el capitán?
Por favor, pase adelante. Muchísimas gracias por la oportunidad que me dan para expresarme. Ciudad de San Luis, Arizona, septiembre veintisiete. Respetable alcaldesa, concilio de la ciudad, administradora y abogado de la ciudad. Solo vengo para dar una respuesta a las quejas que se hicieron en la sesión pasada contra nuestro programa de ayuda comunitaria. Ni siquiera vengo a cuestionar o a contradecir tales quejas. Vengo ni siquiera, no vengo ni siquiera a defenderme. Vengo solo a pedir comprensión y ayuda para continuar con nuestro ministerio de ayuda a nuestras comunidades y sé que me dirán que no me están deteniendo pero detener la entrada de nuestro troque solamente para descargar a nuestra propiedad es lo mismo que detenernos. Respeto su forma de ver las cosas y solo quiero decir dos cosas. La primera es pedir una sincera disculpa a todos ustedes, a nuestros vecinos aquí presentes también que les causamos mucha incomodidad por tanto tiempo de verdad, en serio les pido perdón por desatender lo principal que es su comodidad y la imagen de nuestra área, a lo cual me comprometo a cuidar y no repetir las mismas cosas. De hecho ya fui con algunos principales afectados a pedir una sincera disculpa y puedo decir que el señor Daniel Padilla aquí presente fue muy cortés, fue muy noble al aceptar mis disculpas y aceptar que nuestro troque pudiera tener el permiso para entrar y descargar solamente, lo cual agradezco de todo corazón y prometo cumplir a tiempo con esta disposición si así lo permite nuestro concilio. La segunda cosa es pedir a ustedes su apoyo para que me dejen solamente entrar a descargar y salir inmediatamente del estacionamiento de la iglesia. Con todo respeto cito la ordenanza diez quince dos cincuenta que describe que hay excepción para troques para entrar a áreas residenciales para cargar o descargar solamente. Aunque ustedes me han dicho, me han hecho saber que este código no aplica a nosotros porque nosotros estamos comercializando, estamos comercializando y de nuevo digo respeto mucho su forma de ver las cosas, honorable concilio, respetable alcaldesa. Nosotros no somos una tienda, no somos un mercado, nosotros no estamos comercializando con los productos. Sí es cierto que se pide una pequeña donación por algunos productos pero es para cubrir el impacto de los gastos del mismo programa de comida y apoyo para el sostenimiento de la misma iglesia. Pero hay muchos testigos que toda la verdura, hay muchos testigos que pueden decir que toda la verdura de temporada jamás hemos pedido donación de dinero por nada de eso. Cuando nos llega tomate no se puede...
aquí estamos ciudadanos de San Luis, Arizona, Dios te pedimos que tú les des la sabiduría, tú les des todo lo que ellos necesitan para venir y ponerse de acuerdo y trabajar juntos para esta reunión. Tu palabra también dice Dios que donde hay dos o tres que ahí estás tú. Habemos mucho más que dos o tres. También nos dice Dios podrán dos caminar juntos si no se ponen de acuerdo primero. Yo te doy gracias, bendecimos señor esta reunión y la paz señor, tu paz sea sobre ella, en el nombre de Jesús señor. Lo ponemos en tus manos, amén y amén. Gracias.
Meli. Item number four, call to the public. This is time for the public to comment. Members of the city council may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda. Therefore pursuant to ARS section 38-431.01H, action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. This is time for the public. Is there anyone that wishes to address the mayor and city council?
Ah, Meli. I would like to set some rules. Okay, there's item number eight, eight. That's from el señor Jesús Ortiz, dueño de el navegante, retiró su petición. Entonces si hay personas aquí que sé que iban a venir personas porque recibían, la ciudad recibió cartas que no estaban de acuerdo. Este, son bienvenidos, gracias por estar aquí, tienen su derecho de venir este y expresarse cuando no están de acuerdo. Pero esta, esta, este asunto se terminó por este momento, el señor retiró su petición. Esa es la primera. La segunda, la segunda es algo un poco controversial y tomando en cuenta los trabajadores de la ciudad que empiezan seis, siete, ocho de la mañana y tienen todo el día y tenemos una agenda bastante larga, el, en el call to the public hay dos grupos, uno se en pro y otro se en contra. Les voy a pedir, les voy a proponer que cada grupo escoja un capitán y ese capitán se tome cinco minutos y que se exprese si está a favor, si está contra y estamos hablando del problema que hay con el señor Castro y la iglesia head enemy. Si nos ponemos de acuerdo así todos vamos a salir beneficiados. Si deciden que no es bien, también están en todo su derecho, pero los voy a dejar que al último para sacar toda la agenda de trabajo, en consideración a los empleados de la ciudad que tienen familias y ya pusieron sus ocho, diez, doce horas. Entonces, ¿qué les parece? Nos ponemos de acuerdo. Quieren escoger una persona cada grupo y tomarse sus cinco minutos, entonces de esa manera nos ayuda bastante. ¿Qué dicen? Está bien, un grupo dice que está, están de acuerdo, están de acuerdo. Okay, entonces empezamos con un grupo. ¿Quién quiere ser el primero? Usted señora pase. Y por favor, su nombre, su dirección, es muy importante. Muchas gracias por considerarnos, se agradece.
Mi nombre es Angelica Torres, vivo en el 992 Babilén. Bueno, vengo a exponer mi caso otra vez. El señor Manuel Castro, que es el pastor, vino a tocar la puerta de nosotros, los vecinos, el miércoles veinte de septiembre, lo que fuimos, los que vinimos a la junta el miércoles trece, hacernos una propuesta para que lo apoyemos en dejarlo, que el tráiler venga a su iglesia una o dos horas. Nosotros no estamos de acuerdo porque es un peligro el tráiler. Ya pasó un accidente y él tiene que respetar que hay una ordenanza donde se puede meter el tráiler. Nosotros no estamos de acuerdo, así estamos muy bien, sin ruido, ni peligro, ni el tráiler, no aceptamos que lo vuelva a dejar. Tiene que obedecer, ya basta y que por favor ya no nos han de molestando porque nuestra respuesta es no, no más tráiler. El señor Manuel Castro puso en Facebook que ocupaba firmas que por su ministerio estaba en un colapso. Son puras firmas dadas porque él les regalaba una caja de Dátil, cajita chica, porque no es gente que vive cerca de la iglesia y no saben realmente lo que pasa y como todo el tiempo puro negocio. Las firmas que importan son las de nosotros que ahí vivimos diarios, somos sus vecinos cercanos a él. Y ahora que no está el tráiler y no hay vendimia, vivimos tan a gusto, sin ruido ni peligro. No solamente tumbó el cerco de mi casa. El tráiler se metió y faltó un metro y medio para que se metiera a mi sala. Ya lo dije la otra vez, mi nieta de dos años y medio, veinte minutos antes ella andaba jugando, tengo fotos donde ella andaba jugando mi nieta y para mí, yo no estoy de acuerdo que el señor traiga otra vez el tráiler. Yo tengo fotos, todo tengo ahí. No señor, eso fue algo muy serio, por eso no más tráiler, ni una hora, ni dos horas, ni un minuto, ni un segundo. Nadie le está quitando su ministerio, nosotros no le decimos que se vaya a su ministerio, pero que se reubique, que lo ponga en una parte donde sea comercial, no residencial. Donde nosotros vivimos es residencial, no es comercial. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias. La persona que va a hablar, eh, aquí, escojan, ¿quién va a ser el capitán? Por favor, pase adelante.
Muchísimas gracias por la oportunidad que me dan para expresarme. Ciudad de San Luis, Arizona, septiembre veintisiete, respetable alcaldesa, concilio de la ciudad, administradora y abogado de la ciudad. Solo vengo para dar una respuesta a las quejas que se hicieron en la sesión pasada contra nuestro programa de ayuda comunitaria. Ni siquiera vengo a cuestionar o a contradecir tales quejas. Vengo, ni siquiera, no vengo ni siquiera a defenderme. Vengo solo a pedir comprensión y ayuda para continuar con nuestro ministerio de ayuda a nuestras comunidades. Y sé que me dirán que no me están deteniendo, pero detener la entrada de nuestro troque solamente para descargar a nuestra propiedad es lo mismo que detenernos. Respeto su forma de ver las cosas y solo quiero decir dos cosas. La primera es pedir una sincera disculpa a todos ustedes, a nuestros vecinos aquí presentes también, que les causamos mucha incomodidad por tanto tiempo de verdad, en serio les pido perdón por desatender lo principal que es su comodidad y la imagen de nuestra área. A lo cual me comprometo a cuidar y no repetir las mismas cosas. De hecho, ya fui con algunos principales afectados a pedir una sincera disculpa y puedo decir que el señor Daniel Padilla aquí presente fue muy cortés, fue muy noble al aceptar mis disculpas y aceptar que nuestro troque pudiera tener el permiso para entrar y descargar solamente, lo cual agradezco de todo corazón y prometo cumplir a tiempo con esta disposición si así lo permite nuestro concilio. La segunda cosa es pedir a ustedes su apoyo para que me dejen solamente entrar a descargar y salir inmediatamente del estacionamiento de la iglesia. Con todo respeto, cito la ordenanza diez quince dos cincuenta, que describe que hay excepción para troques, para entrar a áreas residenciales para cargar o descargar solamente. Aunque ustedes me han dicho, me han hecho saber que este código no aplica a nosotros porque nosotros estamos comercializando, estamos comercializando y de nuevo digo, respeto mucho su forma de ver las cosas, honorable concilio, respetable alcaldesa. Nosotros no somos una tienda, no somos un mercado. Nosotros no estamos comercializando con los productos. Sí es cierto que se pide una pequeña donación por algunos productos, pero es para cubrir el impacto de los gastos del mismo programa de comida y apoyo para el sostenimiento de la misma iglesia. Pero hay muchos testigos que toda la verdura, hay muchos testigos que pueden decir que toda la verdura de temporada jamás hemos pedido donación de dinero, por nada de eso. Cuando nos llega tomate no se puede decir vender cuando pedimos dos o tres dólares por una caja de veinte libras de tomate en perfectas condiciones. Y así podríamos mencionar una lista grande de productos que estamos regalando sin nada de cooperación. No estamos vendiendo los productos. Todo se maneja a base de donaciones. Nuestro ministerio tiene ya veinticinco años. Permítame solamente mencionar un poquitito de la historia de las donaciones del dinero. Los primeros dos años entregaron despensas a las comunidades a cero centavos de donación, dos años. Al ver la gran necesidad de la comunidad de ambos lados de la frontera, consulté con la gente si estarían dispuestos a cooperar con solamente dos dólares para continuar porque se miraba ya insostenible el programa. La gente estuvo de acuerdo y así estuvo por más de cinco años después de la inflación y crecimiento en los costos de combustible, chofer, mantenimiento. Nuevamente se mirabas insostenible y continuábamos o continuábamos o continuábamos o parábamos. La gente estuvo de acuerdo en subir la cooperación a cinco dólares, una despensa que tiene un valor de cincuenta, setenta dólares. Y así hemos estado hasta enero de este año. En la pandemia hicimos doce drive, drive foods con la participación de más de trescientos autos en cada uno. Pidió que siguiéramos, perdón, hicimos cuatro drive foods en Somberton sin pedir absolutamente nada. Después la señora Marta nos pidió que siguiéramos apoyando cada dos meses y así lo hicimos. Jamás pedimos nada de donación de dinero. En México se hicieron cuatro drive foods, nunca se pidió nada de dinero. Hace un mes, en los días más calurosos se regaló agua a la comunidad local. En ocasiones vienen troques con cuatro, seis, ocho paletas de verdura fresca en perfectas condiciones y esas las hemos regalado en su totalidad. Se apoyó, se apoya a senior center con productos totalmente gratis. Participamos en desfiles de la ciudad y regalamos muchos productos. Tenemos años ayudando a safety day y otros programas comunitarios. En Thanksgiving regalamos platos de pavo caliente y despensas gratis. En Navidad y Día del Niño se regalan juguetes, bicicletas nuevas y usadas. En cada agosto, back to school, se regalan mochilas y útiles escolares y todo es absolutamente gratis. Se apoya a escuelas y otros programas de la localidad con agua y otros productos gratis. Hace dos semanas entregó a varias iglesias de nuestra comunidad mucho pan de barra, hot dogs y hamburguesa totalmente gratis. Se apoya a cinco iglesias de Yuma, algunas están aquí presentes, cada semana y es totalmente gratis. Respectuoso concilio, señor alcaldesa, créanme, estamos viviendo al día, verdad digo en Cristo, no miento. No estamos acaudolando, acaudalando dinero. Cada viaje es un milagro y las miles de libras de tonel, son toneladas de bendiciones para nuestra gente. Y somos muy felices de poder ayudar a nuestras familias. Por favor, no basen su decisión en que estamos comercializando o que nos estamos haciendo ricos porque no es así. Se pide donación, sí, y en muchos casos se dona totalmente a las personas que expresan que no tienen trabajo o que acaban de llegar a nuestra ciudad. Podemos presentarles cientos de testimonios de familias que han sido grandemente bendecidas por nuestro ministerio. Por favor. Estimadas autoridades, pido solamente acogerme al código diez quince dos cincuenta. Solo pido se me permita entrar al estacionamiento y descargar productos, productos que se usa, serán usados para las despensas y salir inmediatamente. Ah, que hay otros códigos que requieren cumplirse. Estoy a sus órdenes para ver esos códigos, sujetarme a ellos. Si ustedes me guían, si ustedes me ayudan, si ustedes me orientan. Podemos trabajar juntos para que nuestras comunidades sigan siendo bendecidas por nuestro ministerio. La disposición de descargar en un lugar lejano y que los productos sean transportados a nuestro estacionamiento implica tener varios vehículos chicos que no los tenemos. Implica involucrar más trabajadores y no los tenemos. Implica más gastos y no tenemos recursos económicos, esa es la verdad. Permitir que nuestro troque entre por un par de horas solamente ayudaría mucho y nuestros vecinos no estarían bajo ningún riesgo. Ningún, nuestro troque no estaría más en nuestro estacionamiento, mucho menos pasaría la noche en nuestro estacionamiento, ni troque, ni tráiler, ni ruido, ni nada. Reitero, no somos una tienda, no somos un mercado, está, no estamos comercializando. Muchas gracias por su atención y solo espero hallar gracia ante ustedes y pueda tener su favor. Con las condiciones que ustedes me marquen, por favor ayúdenme a seguir adelante. Muchas gracias. Aquí les entrego esta petición, aquí les entrego un paquete de firmas de, son casi quinientas firmas de todas las áreas de la ciudad. Aquí hay muchas personas que apoyan nuestro programa aquí presentes. El Facebook y el Instagram están llenos de apoyos y oraciones para que tengan un fallo a nuestro favor. Gracias y que Dios me los bendiga.
Muchas gracias.
Item number five, proclamations.
No viene, okay.
Ningún grupo, algo personal, una experiencia.
Buenas tardes, mayor, al concilio. Ah, mi nombre es Luis Márquez, vivo en el doce cincuenta y cuatro América Street. Yo nomás vengo algo, a comentar algo. Yo tengo treinta años conociendo al pastor y los últimos, en veinte años que trabajé yo en el departamento de policía, fue uno de los que me ayudó más en todos mis programas y los que están aquí, no sé si saben los programas que había, campañas de limpieza, los paseos en bicicleta, las donaciones de sangre, Safety Ben con tres mil niños. El señor pastor nos ayudó en ese evento de tres mil niños siempre nos ayudó cada año.
Okay, dijiste que no venías con ningún grupo, por favor te sientas porque ese fue el trato.
Gracias por darme este tiempo, muy amable. Tengan buenas tardes.
No, ya, ya, así ya se termina. Yo sé que la señora quiere hablar también, pero tenemos un trato y como gente decente debemos de acatarlo. Muchas gracias, discúlpame Luis porque no es mi intención avergonzarte y te lo digo de corazón. Continuamos.
Item number five, proclamations presentation. Item number five A, National Custodian Workers Recognition Day, October second, twenty twenty three. Item five B, breast cancer awareness month, October twenty twenty three. Item five C, bullying prevention month, October twenty twenty three. Item five D, domestic violence awareness month, October twenty twenty three. Item five E, national community planning month, October twenty twenty three. Item five F, national cybersecurity awareness month, October twenty twenty three. Now therefore be resolved that Mayor Neves Riedel hereby declares the proclamations in the city of San Luis, Arizona this twenty seventh day of September, twenty twenty three. Item number five G, presentation by Yuma Coalition on the Brownfields to Innovation Districts. Craig Stoffel Ayers Association and Jerry Cabrera Elevate Southwest.
All right, can everyone hear me okay?
Good evening, everyone. Yes, Craig.
Good evening.
Uh, ma- mayor council, thank you very much for having, having us over. Appreciate your time. My name is Jerry Cabrera with Elevate Southwest. And we're here to actually give an update on our Ayers project and evolution thereof of the Coalition of Brownfield and where we're at at this point. Jeff, can you go to, to that timeline, please? Craig, oh, can you go to the timeline? Oh, sorry, I said Jeff. There's another Jeff had earlier this meeting and a meeting. So what is Elevate Southwest? I want to start there a little bit of what, what Elevate Southwest is. Go back to, to that timeline. So, further down.
Yeah, there we go.
There, there we go. So back in twenty twelve, there was a Brownfield grant that was given to the city of Yuma and the coalition, which consists of Yuma County as well. And with the heritage, heritage district as well. And at that time, Elevate Southwest or Yuma Multiversity was not involved. At that time, start, things started to occur in terms of the political areas and where we can have more development in those areas. Then moved on to twenty fourteen, there was a vision of looking at a university, a new university for, for the Yuma, for Yuma County. And so at that point in juncture, things started to move on and moving forward to twenty twenty, at that point, Yuma Multiversity was born with the idea with the coalition in terms of creating this innovation hub and university. That was the initial thought. So twenty twenty, we read that Yuma Multiversity did receive a grant in, in the amount of about one point five million to look at these areas and what the stakeholders in Yuma County would need to make sure that this is the right direction if it was going to be a brand new university to the area. Two hundred and fifty stakeholders across the county were interviewed at that point in juncture to make sure that we were looking at the right areas and, and coming up with a great solution for our area. So that did definitely change in terms of where we're gonna, we end up today. So Craig, if you go back to the first slide, please. So now in twenty twenty three, back in twenty twenty two, the, the assessments was completed, about two hundred and fifty assessments across the county. And one thing that we looked at is who we are and what is our mission. And, and the, and at that point in juncture, we knew that the university was not part of the mission in terms of having a brand new university to the area. But more than anything else, it was increase a workforce, a workforce in the area, a workforce in STEM fields. And so that is where Elevate Southwest came in, which we're still Yuma Multiversity, but we changed our name to Yuma, uh, from Yuma Multiversity to Elevate Southwest. Obviously, we are not a university, we are a nonprofit organization. So at point in juncture, um, that, that evolution is starting part of Brownfield, um, juncture that we're currently having right now. But one thing that we are looking forward and our mission is to increase baccalaureate attainment and CTE programs either via STEM type of programs or, like, we know that Arizona Western College, Yuma Union High School District, they're doing a great job, including steady Arizona Air Work, uh, doing a great job in itself. One thing that the stakeholders did look at, it was the demographics themselves. The demographics, what everybody or every industry looks at across Yuma County. One area that we looked at was bachelors. Baccalaureate attainment for Yuma County is, if you look at the demographics, demographics from the census and go back twenty, thirty, forty years, every ten years, that has not changed. We're still looking at anywhere from thirteen to eighteen percent, uh, baccalaureate attainment for Yuma County out of two hundred thousand of people as far as population is concerned. So that's kind of, that's really low, even though the state is looking at an increase of sixty percent of baccalaureate attainment to, at least for the state of Arizona, there's going to be a need of more than eight million baccalaureate attainments by twenty thirty. So there's, there's a huge discrepancy of where we're at. And so this is one of our main visions, uh, missions to work at. Uh, Craig, go ahead, please, to the next slide.
Sure.
Uh, so one of the recommendations from the assessment and the stakeholders was to create a place, location of where you can work, play and stay and obviously learn. So that's the other mission of Elevate Southwest is to create an innovation hub. The innovation hub is a mixed use development where we can have all, all three universities, ASU, NAU, UFA, including Arizona Western College. And one thing that we're also adding to this mix is that even though we have two hundred thousand people in population, one area that we're marketing more than anything else is we're also inviting San Luis, uh, Sonora and Mexicali as well and including Imperial Valley. So that point as far as the strategic plan and, um, the partners is about one point seven million people when we look at it because whatever happens in San Luis or Mexicali or Imperial Valley affects us, Yuma County area. It affects us tremendously and whatever we do here affects them as well. So we're collaborating to make sure that we move forward into a pathway of increased baccalaureate attainments through an innovation hub. So there's a lot of pieces between Elevate, what we're doing and Ayers and associates with, um, the strategic development to move forward on the baccalaureate attainment of the mission. So go ahead, Craig, next, next slide, please. The following one. Go, go through that one because I already kind of did those. So one of the things is obviously is, is to propel the greater Yuma region onto excellence and secondary education. It's not necessarily about high school and or, or what's happening in that area or steady. It's about increasing after high school. Uh, many of our students will go into Arizona Western College, they'll do maybe one year, two years. And they do have a two plus two program that they'll go to, um, after two years in Arizona Western College, they'll go to a university. Um, that has taken place for, for many years now. Actually, my daughter did, did that. She took actually math in eighth grade as well. But one thing is to establish that, those parameters and continue after their, it's like their two years in college, continuing the universities and, and finish. So one thing that we also looked at, and I know this is not part of the, the, the whole presentation, but it's, it comes together as a lot of the, what's taking shape and establishing ourselves as the data we're looking at. So what data are we looking at? We're looking at the Yuma Union High School District because it's obviously over ten thousand students. Um, we're also looking at the other universities, but it's, it's a public education that we're visioning. And there's two studies, one from Helios and then one from the Center of Future of Arizona. And there were mirrors in terms of the results of all the students that are graduating. The last ones were from twenty sixteen students that are now received their bachelors. And the results were about four hundred and twenty students that received their bachelors from twenty nineteen. That doesn't mean that, um, there's other places that the students went to as far as private schools, but this is from the clearinghouse, the national clearinghouses. It's a public data that we use, uh, including all the data from, uh, CFA as well. Go ahead, Craig. So as we look at, uh, the comprehension plan itself and how to enrich the industrial areas for, for, for Yuma County to bring them either in San Luis, Arizona, if they're going to establish themselves, we're looking at an innovation hub which consists of a lot of STEM type of activities. What we're looking at is an innovation hub where obviously we'll have the laboratories, entrepreneurship, um, a place for apartments and or classrooms as well in order to flourish and make sure that the, at least for the city of San Luis and the economic development folks, it's easier for them to attract as we have, we would have a plan in place to make sure that continues and flourishes through this innovation hub. But before we got to that point, uh, Brownfield is looking at three areas, which is Arizona, Arizona Western College, San Luis, Arizona and downtown Yuma. And Craig, it's all yours at this point.
All right, perfect. Thanks, Jerry.
It's a lot.
So just a little bit about the Brownfield program itself that we've been discussing. It's an EPA funded project, um, a coalition, the coalition, um, submitted a grant application and was awarded six hundred thousand dollars from the EPA in twenty twenty one. And that, that six hundred thousand dollars is really earmarked for planning and environmental analysis and testing. So there's no construction associated with this project. There's no cleanup associated with these dollars. It's really about trying to look at vacant and underutilized parcels and seeing what the development potential is for those. And if they are contaminated, what kind of remediation would be required so that we can clean them up and then have them redeveloped for getting the back into productive use. So that's the general outline of the grant project and, and like Jerry mentioned, when we, when the coalition hired Ayers associates, they're also getting the strategic assessment in place for the multiversity. So we, we kind of held off on actual work until that was released because we really knew that there was going to be some recommendations in that report that this Brownfield grant could support. So this grant project is all about looking at redevelopment potential. And so as Jerry mentioned, um, you know, we went through the reports, found some that are definitely eligible grant activities that we could support and move forward. We went back to the EPA and, and asked for, um, the original grant was more focused on downtown Yuma and we went back and said, you know, we've identified through the strategic analysis report that there's a lot more regional entrepreneurial ecosystem out here that we should really be focusing on. So they approved our revised work plan, which now includes San Luis and the AWC campus area. So we've begun starting to look at all these different, um, sites with the lens of that live, work, play and urban village framework. And so we're looking at ways to really look at how we can make a successful innovation district. And, and not just a district, but how can it be a countywide effort and what, how these three spaces and communities really could, um, support each other and support this overall mission. So we're going to be spending the next year essentially, um, going through with some development plans, um, uh, interviews, public meetings, really trying to figure out, setting the framework for this, um, successful innovation hub. Um, and so like Jerry's mentioned, the, what makes them work will be really dialing in, um, and looking into those. So this is kind of what we'll be looking at, trying to, um, build upon in San Luis and downtown Yuma. You know, with San Luis, we'll be looking to build upon the efforts that, um, have already undergone with the downtown redevelopment plan that was recently adopted. We're We're aware of the port of entry project. So there's a lot of great things happening that we're just gonna try to, um, add to those successes with this grant. So we have a public engagement, um, coming up next week. So we'll be in San Luis at City Hall presenting, um, some preliminary ideas. We really wanna meet with the public and talk about what it is they'd like to see in some of these areas. You know, um, think parking lots that aren't being used or vacant parcels that may or may not be contaminated. Those, um, those are what we get excited about. So we wanna meet with the community and, and hear what they would like to have in their town for the long term. So this is, um, so we will be there on Thursday, October 5th. And then we'll be presenting, um, a similar presentation in, in Yuma on the 6th. And then we'll also be, um, having a little, uh, booth, information booth set up at the Tacos and Tunes event in downtown Yuma on Saturday. Just as another opportunity to try to connect with people that may or may not come to a City Hall meeting, uh, in an evening or an afternoon. So, uh, we're really excited. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Um, I think it's, it's time.
Okay.
Uh, I'm getting the, the green light over here or the red light.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
So I don't know if, uh, Mayor Council, um, I don't know if you have, have any questions. I do wanna add that San Luis high school kids are the top-rated students at ASU. Okay, that's something important to say. Obviously, there was, I think, it came out in the paper today, there were 60-plus students that, uh, received perfect scores on their assessment. Um, so you should be proud of, of student, I should say our students, because I taught here in San Luis, Arizona, too, so. Maybe I did something here.
Well, thank you, everyone, for your time.
Any questions or anything?
When, when are you guys going to be here?
Excuse me?
When will you be here at City Hall?
Uh, it'll be next week.
Thursday at 4:00 P.M.
At 4:00 P.M.
Thank you.
For public engagement.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, thank you, great presentation.
Thank you, everyone.
An item, five page. Uh, the presentation is gonna be continued. Uh, the person that was going to give us the presentation, uh, had a family emergency and is gonna be moved to a later date. Thank you.
Item number six, consent agenda. All matters are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Six eight, minutes of regular council meeting held August 23rd, 2023. Six B, dispersments from September 6th, 2023 to September 19th, 2023.
Is there a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. A second.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion carries. Thank you.
Item seven A, discussion and possible action on any no matters regarding resolution 2290. A resolution of the city council of the city of San Luis, Arizona, approving the first amendment to the pre-annexation development agreement, San Luis Port Two Industrial Park LLC, as approved by resolution number 936, repealing conflict implications and providing for separability. Jose Guzman, Director of Planning and zoning.
Uh, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. So Bombardier Development applied for a final plat approval for the Southwest Arizona Industrial Subdivision Phase Two. Uh, the proposed subdivision is located north of County 24th Street between Avenue D and Avenue D and a half. Uh, this property is part of a pre-annexation agreement that was approved back in 2011 by resolution number 936. This, uh, development agreement requires the construction of sidewalks along Avenue D. The applicant is requesting the removal of that condition, allowing the development to be, uh, done without the sidewalks on Avenue D. Staff believes that it's important to develop, uh, any property following the adopted regulations, including the Polyworks and the general plan, to provide for, uh, sidewalk for current and future connectivity. If the, um, the sidewalks are not required right now and are required in the future, the city will end up paying for those, uh, for that construction. So on, on the item, we, um, added two motions for, uh, city council's consideration.
Any questions, comments from council? Uh, anybody wants to make a motion?
I move to approve an adopted resolution number 2,290 as presented.
There's a motion. Do I hear a second?
I second.
There's a motion in a second. All those, uh, in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mayor, I, I, I wasn't sure. I'm sorry. Is it too late? I wasn't sure because of the two. We voted to approve and not have the sidewalks?
No.
That what we approved?
The question?
So, uh, the motion to adopt the resolution is amending the, the, the pre-annexation, removing the sidewalks.
To remove them?
Uh-huh. And, uh, the motion to deny is to keep the sidewalks as it is.
Okay, the motion is, the, the sidewalks is a requirement for the sidewalks to be there? That's your question?
Yeah, so the current, uh, agreement requires a sidewalk. If the agreement is not amended, meaning the, the motion to deny, then the sidewalks will have to be required. If the, uh, annexation agreement is amended, meaning the, the, the approval of this resolution, then the sidewalks requirement will be removed.
Mayor, mayor, I'm, 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 I'm sorry I came here and I got confused. Then I moved to go back and, um, amend my motion on the first item.
Okay. Maria?
Yes, mayor. I, my concern is that I believe it's very important to have the sidewalks. I don't want the city to pay for anything that we don't have to. So that's why I got a little confused and didn't vote.
Me too.
Okay, so, uh, uh, council member de la Oya, you're going to amend your?
Yes, I moved to deny resolution number 2,290.
Oh, okay. Hold on just a minute. We have a motion, but, uh, uh, is?
The applicant is here, uh, in case you have any question for them as well.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
So, uh, the person that is in charge of this, they would like to say something, okay?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, the reason that we are requesting that this sidewalk be, um, not built is just on the location on Avenue D from 24th going north. This is basically a sidewalk to nowhere, because there's this, there, the adjacent to this property is the lift station, and then adjacent to that property is the prison. And I don't believe that you would want a sidewalk that would lead to that part, and, and it basically goes to nowhere. We're just asking for there not to be a sidewalk from Avenue 24th going north on Avenue D. That's the only thing that we're asking. And, and, and I think if, if you were gonna, if you're gonna make us put a sidewalk in there, then you need to put a sidewalk from the lift station all the way up past the prison. And I don't think that that's something that the city wants to do. This is industrial property where usually a sidewalk does not go.
Okay, any, any questions, any?
For Jose, please. Jose Guzman?
Pardon?
A question for Jose, Jose Guzman.
Jose.
Okay.
So what do you say? We don't need the sidewalk then, because there's no, there's no pedestrians gonna be going through that area?
So, um, the regulation required for all our two roads to have sidewalk, uh, regardless if, um, the uses that we currently have for future connectivity, uh, we should require sidewalks. And like I mentioned, if we don't require it right now, uh, and end up needing them, the city will end up paying for that.
That's what I don't want. I don't want the city to pay for something, so.
But what about in the future? In the future, they couldn't need the sidewalk.
Okay, so we clarified everybody's okay with, with, uh, Mr. Guzman and, and Mrs. Carpenter explanation, because we have an item that?
Okay, so, so my motion to amend and move to deny the resolution number 2,290 reflects that we want the sidewalk, correct? And that's the proper motion to make?
Yes, if we want the sidewalk, yes.
Uh, so, because I made the wrong motion at the beginning. So the, I, I moved to amend my original motion to deny resolution number 2,290.
Which would allow for their, the developers to create the sidewalks.
Yes.
They will not be exempt from providing the sidewalks. That's what deny would mean.
Basically, what Mrs. Carpenter is saying that related to the sidewalks, the city should go ahead and, and do the continuation of the sidewalks, and I don't see a problem with that. Uh, I mean, that should be the sidewalks. If they're gonna put a, a sidewalk and then it's gonna be an open space, and then the city has to go and finish the sidewalks that belongs to the city and, and I is gonna, the city's gonna have to pay for the sidewalks on the detention center, too. Okay, that's, that's what we're talking about in here? Okay. And then it will be done.
But the sidewalks, the city can build the sidewalks whenever they want, right?
Excuse me?
The side, the sidewalks will, the city, the sidewalks that pertain to the city, the city can build those whenever we want, right?
Uh, oh, yes, uh, definitely, uh, but if you're gonna build a piece of, uh, uh, a sidewalk, uh, it only makes sense to continue because people are going to go walking. And if you go after 7 o'clock at night in that area, they're already going around, so.
Ma, um, Mr. Mayor, uh, council, may I, uh, as the applicant, I would like to say some words. Um, my name is Viana Vega. Uh, I'm the applicant for the, for the project. The, the requirement of the sidewalks, we are putting sidewalk, there's, there's three boundary, uh, streets on the project. We are, we are putting sidewalk on 24th Avenue, which will be the alignment of Avenue D and a half. That sidewalk goes north to a residential, residential district. Uh, this project is industrial, but we are putting that sidewalk connecting from 24th, um, 24th, uh, County 24th, uh, going north, uh, to that residential. And then we are putting sidewalk along the south boundary line, which is all the alignment of 24th, uh, County 24th. So we are putting side, the, the, the majority of the project is gonna have the sidewalk. Our request is to, uh, not provide sidewalk on the east, on the east side of the project. Um, I don't know if you have the plot that we can look at, so I can make a reference to. It'll be the final, yeah, that one. The second sheet. Right there, yeah. So, so if, as you can see, the longer side of the, the longest side of the, of the project is the south side, County alignment of County 24th Street. We are gonna have sidewalk all along the south property line. On the left side, which is the alignment of D and a half, we have sidewalk going north to the residential district. Our request is, on the east side, the short distance there, that is the one that we, we wanna, uh, exclude of the requirement, because this is a sidewalk, as Ms. Carpenter mentioned, that is going nowhere. The, the property abutting to, to the north is the wastewater treatment plant, uh, owned by city of, city of San Luis. Then after that, we have the detention facility. So that is why we're basing our request that, uh, um, that sidewalk, there's no need for that sidewalk, since there's no sidewalks on the wastewater treatment plant. Um, and, and of course, there's no sidewalks on the detention facility. So, so that is, or, that is the base for our requests. So I hope this clarifies a little bit the, 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 why we're requesting that. We're not requesting not to put sidewalk in the complete development. We are putting the sidewalks where we know that they're gonna be needed for residents in the area. We're providing those sidewalks. We feel that that, that short distance on Avenue D, there's no need for that because we have, we have, uh, these two, uh, properties on the north side of the, of, uh, our project, that they don't have sidewalks, and, and we don't feel that is, is a good idea to have sidewalks on that area. I'd be more than glad to answer any questions that, uh, council, uh, mayor might have.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, uh, I think I go back with, um, Mr. Guzman. After the explanation that the project engineer and the owner, what is your?
Um.
Recommendation?
So staff understands the point that the, the engineer mentioned, the uses to the north. But like I mentioned, for future connectivity, uh, it's important we require infrastructure for pedestrian connectivity.
Mayor, having said that, I, mm, called the vote on the dial of resolution number 2,000, 2,290.
I'm gonna, um, go with the recommendation that staff has presented, recommends.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Is there a second, uh, council member?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any ayes? Motion carries. Okay. Next. Thank you.
Item number seven B, discussion and possible action on any no matters regarding subdivision case number 2, 2022-0556F, Southwest Arizona Industrial Subdivision Phase Two Final Plat. A request by Vega and Vega Engineer, Engineering PLC on behalf of Bombardier Development LLC for the final plat approval of the Southwest Arizona Industrial Subdivision Phase Two to be located on the northeast corner of Avenue D and a half and County 24th Street in San Luis, Arizona. Jose Guzman, Director of Planning and Zoning.
Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Uh, as mentioned, this subdivision is located north of County 24th Street between the Avenue D and Avenue D and a half. Um, it's about 40 acres and will consist of five industrial lots. So the, the presented motion is, um, approval, uh, with the condition that they follow the pre-annexation agreement or any amendments, since the, uh, development agreement was not amended, they will require to provide the sidewalks.
Questions, comments from council? Any comments? Any questions? Then. Engineer? Owner? No comments? Okay. I apologize for the last time that I didn't call you guys. Sorry.
Mayor, I move to approve subdivision case number 2022-0556F with the condition that the applicant meets the conditions of the pre-annexation agreement approved by resolution number 936, or any developmental agreement amending the pre-annexation agreement approved by resolution number 936.
It's either or.
Excuse me?
It's either or. Both?
Yeah, so since there was no amendment to resolution, uh, 936, the motion covers either or. So they will have to comply with existing on the agreement.
As it's, as it is?
Yeah.
So as it is, it requires the sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay, so there is a motion.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in agreement signify by saying aye.
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 Any ayes? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item number seven C, discussion and possible action on any no matters regarding resolution 2292. A resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of San Luis, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into a development agreement between city of San Luis, Arizona and Riddell Holdings LLC for La Esperanza State Subdivision. Jose Guzman, Director of Planning and Zoning.
At this time, I will abstain, and I'll ask the vice mayor to take over. I have a conflict.
So noted, mayor. Mr. Guzman?
Um, last, last month, city council approved a resoning for La Esperanza State Subdivision. This subdivision will be located between 8th Avenue and 6th Avenue, uh, south of the East, East Main Canal. And the approval was subject to the conditions, to several conditions. And one of the conditions was to formalize the approval through a development agreement. Uh, this item is the, the development agreement for, for set approval. The applicant is, uh, in agreement with all the conditions and the agreement.
Any questions from council? Is there a motion?
I move to approve an adopted resolution 2,292.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Item number seven D. Discussion and possible action on any new matters regarding resolution number twenty-two ninety-three. A resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of San Luis Alisona amending the classification and salary plan to create seven new classifications superseding any conflicting provisions of existing regulations or policies and providing for separability. Adela Cortez, Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of Council. During the meeting of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, a restructure was presented by staff and was approved for several departments of the city. That restructure included the creation of seven new classifications that impact the classification and salary plan that was presented to Council during the, the budget adoption in May. And we are coming today to provide the revised compensation and classification plan along with the resolution.
Any questions, comments for Ms. Adela?
I do have a comment. Last time when we discussed this item, we didn't have a lot of information, just a question. So, thank you, Jenny, for the report I got yesterday. So, that report was created by, only by city staff or by a third-party consultant?
Only by city staff.
Okay. So, there's, from what I was able to read or find, because there's too many fifteen pages of it, there's discrepancies in, in two positions. Last time, the facilities department was moved. Yet, there's no consistency. And in other positions, since the IT manager, building and collections manager, risk manager, and it was said that it was not able to be a standalone division yet to be moved to Public Works, but yet we're creating it as a standalone. So, I don't see how is that feasible. And if there's discrepancies right now between your resolution, what you presented last week, the attachment in ten years, and that's what happens. We have employees here that have been here over five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. When that happens, their time and position is affected. And when a time and position is affected, you affect their pay when you make these changes with no one else reviewing it. And yes, in the past was done. And, but there was only, you know, three, four people in HR. Now, there's nine. So, by not having it, makes me uneasy by not having outside eyes not reviewing the information if there are discrepancies the city is presenting. And that's just a comment, not a question. And I just like for the record, for the record. Because you have two positions in different divisions, and they're not there right now. And they haven't, one of them has been there, the other one has never been there or was there over ten years ago. So, when, in ten years, when none of us are here, they're over the, the limitations rule. What is it called, Kay? The statute of limitations. So, if they have any claims to whatever changes we're doing today, they don't have a ground because we changed it and they, they don't know. But again, that's just my opinion and my comments. And I stand that we, you know, outside eyes should see these because we don't know what other departments do to just, to make, you know, changes. And I know it's not to hurt the employees as, as you are presenting it, but I, I just want that on the record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Councilmember?
I just wanted to mention that during the council meeting on January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, we talked about review of positions and salaries. And at that time, staff got direction to do that internally and not utilize the outside vendor. So, this study here was based on that, to do it internally. But if you, you know, decide that we need to go to an outside consulting firm, we can definitely do that as well.
How much did we save? I remember that meeting. It was pretty expensive.
The total, the proposal for the total classification and compensation was a hundred ninety-six thousand.
How many years of experience do you have in HR, Ms. Adela?
Almost twenty-five.
Okay. I, I, I have confidence, Councilmember de la Olla, that if we have very capable people that can guide us and save some monies, I think that we should take advantage of that. Maybe, maybe, we did have that meeting, I remember. And we voted and we agree. Maybe next time that there's something like that, that we're gonna use the knowledge of, could be the city engineer or the architect or whoever, maybe we should have a work session, which by the way, I was the one that I don't like them because it's a repetition. But maybe next time, Councilmember de la Olla, maybe there will be something that we should consider. But I feel comfortable taking advantage of, of people's knowledge. Like, when I go to you, because you have so much knowledge, Tadeo, I, I have confidence that you're giving me right advice. And that's the way I feel with most of you.
Yeah. And I concur with you. And I was not asking for a hundred and ninety thousand dollar salary study. That's, that's just way too much money. But a salary update, which is, this is what it is, it's not a full-blown salary update. So, there's, and there's a difference there. And that's my whole point. It's not wanting to spend a hundred and ninety, but that was quoted at fifteen to twenty thousand dollars back then. And I made the same comment that is, you know, I'm not questioning Adela's experience or everything. But again, even as it is presented today, there's discrepancies. If you put attention to two, three positions that I was able to find out. But again, it's the majority rules. I'm just, I just want that on the record. So, in ten years or whenever, at least it's stipulated somewhere on the minutes.
Okay. So noted.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else?
Mayor, I would like to move to approve, ratify, and adopt resolution number twenty-two ninety-three as presented and authorize budget transfers as shown in the fiscal impact of this agenda item.
There's a motion. Is there a second? There's a motion in a second. All those in favors, favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays?
Nay.
Recall.
Please.
Councilmember Maria Cecilia Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Luis Cabrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Gloria Torres.
Aye.
Councilmember Tadeo Azazel de la Olla.
Nay.
Mayor Nieves Riedel.
Aye.
Mayor, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven E. Discussion and possible action on any new matters regarding the purchase of a new Elgin Broome Bear street sweeper for RWC Group. Manuel Hernandez, Acting Assistant Director of Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers. As explained in the agenda item, Public Works is here this evening seeking your approval on the purchase of a twenty twenty-four Elgin Broome Bear street sweeper. Our team worked with other municipalities and the four of the largest street sweeper manufacturers before deciding on the Elgin. We also consulted with cities like Glendale, Mesa, Buckeye, Avondale, et cetera, and both their operation teams as well as their fleet services and mechanics. Our priorities were reliability, maintenance cost, and the ease in use and repair.
Questions, comments? No? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the purchase of a new street sweeper in the amount of three hundred sixty, five hundred and seven dollars and sixty-seven cents and to approve a budget transfer as presented in the fiscal impact of this agenda item.
There's a motion?
Aye.
Go ahead.
In a second? Everybody's in, in agreement signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
Item seven F. Discussion and possible action on any new matters regarding the amendment to the professional services agreement with Pace Advanced Water Engineering to include construction administration and Aquifer, Aquifer Protection Permit APP assistance. Manuel Hernandez, Acting Assistant Director of Public Works.
Once again, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers. Public Works is here this evening seeking your approval to amend the professional services agreement with Pace Engineering for the East Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvement Project.
Questions, comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to accept the amended professional services proposal from Pace Advanced Water Engineering, adding construction administration and Aquifer Protection Permit assistance in the amount of fifty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second. There's a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion carries. Thank you, Manuel.
Item seven G. Discussion and possible action on any new matters regarding an agreement for the City of San Luis to become sister city with the City of Magdalena de Quino, Sonora, Mexico. Olivia Jenkins, Operations Coordinator.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of Council. I guess I can't ask for any more money. Public Works used it all. Jesus. Anyway. This request came from Council de México for offering us an opportunity to be, become sister cities with our counterparts in Mexico. There was a list of, of the different entities or cities in Mexico that we could participate as, and make an agreement for, to become sister cities. Her recommendation was with Magdalena de Quino. And Mayor Riedel responded by accepting that challenge to become sister cities. The City of San Luis has only had two other previous that I could find in our records became sister city with San Luis Rio Colorado Sonora in nineteen eighty-eight. And a second one that I found was with Nabolato, Sinaloa, in two thousand and five. So, this would be our, our third sister city agreement that we would sign off on with. And Councilmember de la Olla, Councilmember Vargas were selected and volunteered to go. And that's gonna happen tomorrow during a ceremony in Scottsdale. Unfortunately, Councilmember de la Olla wasn't able to participate, but Councilmember Vargas is on his way to be in that ceremony where they're gonna be signing this agreement. And that's what's being presented to you at this time.
Any questions, comments?
A request. Olivia, can you just briefly share what a sister city is or how it benefits our community?
Yes. And it's something I had to learn. Even though I've had thirty-five years of experience with the city, this is something new to me. This is where cities from the, on the US side and on Mexico side agreed to become sisters. And they share different aspects of, of their community. It could be in something that they're, they have in common or something that they don't have in common, but they share, and the willingness to, to learn about each city. For example, in Magdalena de Quino, they have a lot of tourism, a lot of areas where, you know, maybe we can learn something about. The only thing that I could find in the research that I did for San Luis that we have in our history is that we were part or this, this area is part of the Gaston Purchase back in fifteen, what year was it? Oh, I'm sorry, eighteen fifty-three. That's when that agreement happened. But that's one of the biggest things that I saw in, in their profile that the, Magdalena de Quino has a lot of this, this areas of tourism. Something that we have in common is agriculture. So, the challenge is to learn from each other and help each other grow in, in, in the areas that we choose. So, in the rest, in the agreement that you have been provided, there's a list of the different areas that we can, we can exchange ideas or work in a project together where it would benefit both, both cities, both communities.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Comment? It's one of my favorite magical cities in Mexico. If you haven't been there, I would highly recommend it. And when you go, you have to eat las enchiladas de gorditas, I mean, just saying.
And as a, as a matter of fact, that's, that's part of what we exchanged with, with the city that we, that we agreed to make, to become sisters. Actually, for productos gastronómicos, membrillo y cajeta de membrillo, queso cocido, carne machaca, pozole de trigo de sanisidro, carne con chile, tamales de elote y carne, carne asada, pan dulce, frutas en conserva, jamoncillos, mel, melcochas y, sí, chimichangas. So, there you go.
Se les olvidó las coyotas, pero bueno.
Yes. But, you know, so they, they have a pretty good profile of, of different areas that we can tap into and maybe learn something from, from them.
Maybe in the near future, we should, we should get together and, and, and go, the whole council go and visit Magdalena. And some staff, this is por también. But that will be in the future.
So. For Ms. Kay, also just to let you know, she was sharing with me that this is the most intensive agreement that she's seen for a sister city agreement, where the one from nineteen eighty-eight is just a one-page. It doesn't really talk about, you know, anything that we would exchange. But I think this would be a good opportunity for us to, to share our experiences and our knowledge with, with other areas.
Let's make that trip sooner.
Yes. I'm, I'm for it.
Before the winter. Okay. Anybody else?
Mayor, if nothing else, I make a move to approve the sister city agreement with the City of Magdalena de Quino.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good presentation, Oli.
Item number seven H. Discussion and possible action on any new matters regarding the prosecutor vacancy. Continue from September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three regular council meeting. Kay Marion McQuill, City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me all right through the mask? Hopefully. This is, this item is about the vacancy in the prosecutor's office. Right now, we have a ninety-day contracted prosecutor in the position. I did speak with her last night and asked her how it's going. And she said that our court is much, much more busy than she anticipated. This morning, I also spoke with our temporary Judge Landau. And he is convinced that even when we get through the backlog, we have a backlog back to about April, that it will still be a full-time position. And our temporary prosecutor is of the same opinion that it will, even getting through the backlog, that there's a lot of business for this court. And they have. When I was a waitress, we used to flog when that happened. So, yesterday, they went through forty-two cases in court in one day. Our prosecutor has fifty-one cases pending to decide whether to do a long-form charging document. And it, it's busy for a, for a tempor, for a part-time person. A contracted attorney would necessarily be part-time because they would want to keep clients in their own business. But the pros to a contracted attorney is the lower cost. And they would cover their own insurance and not be part of our risk pool. However, with a part-time attorney, they would not be able to provide the services that a full-time in-house attorney does. So, part of that is, all, all of the private attorneys are in Yuma. So, the crime victims would not have the same opportunities to meet with the prosecutor like they do here with an in-house. like they do here with an in-house. Also, even for the defendants, there's a lot of deferring prosecutions, holding the prosecution over a defendant's head to see if they can behave for a certain amount of time. And there's some monitoring with that to make sure they're making the steps that might be under that prosecution, deferred prosecution agreement. And so that's where a lot of the reform happens. The personal touch that a prosecutor can do in our community. I know that the eight years I've been here, every year I do the evaluations of the cases, and those are the kind of cases that were presented to me where a person's life was turned away from crime because of the deferred prosecutions. So those type of intensive work would not happen with a contracted attorney. The other problem is a contracted attorney couldn't give advice to the police. An in-house attorney can be on call anytime the police, late at night, holidays, weekends, and can freely give advice and not worry about whether there's any conflicts of interest with that case they're working on. A contracted attorney might have to review their database and make sure they could give advice on that particular case. So we wouldn't expect them to provide that service to the police.
Okay. Comment?
Yes.
We got together and I asked, I'm going to help you a little bit in here. Some years back, they had an outside, they contracted, okay? And my question was, okay, if we bring a subcontractor, are we going to save any money and this and that? And they did a study, and we need a full-time here. Okay, bottom line, right? That's where you're heading to?
Yes, that's where I'm heading.
I like to cut through the chase. And, and, and the numbers do not lie. And the most important thing is the service that we need to give to our citizens here. When they need help, they need now. And if we go and depend somebody else, A, they're going to have their own businesses. And sometimes they're not going to get together with the people when, when people needs them. So this, it took a lot of, a lot of time and work from, from Kay and Jenny and the departments to come up with this. So I'm very impressed with the ways that you guys put it together. But to me, it's like, was a bad idea, we should hire one. Right? That's my opinion. Anybody else?
I agree with you, Mayor. And I still remember that I received an email regarding, we have more than 300 cases pending, so we need to hire a permanent prosecutor full-time.
Yes. So sorry, I didn't want to cut you off.
That's all right. I know it's getting late and I just, people wanted more information, so I'm here if you still have questions.
Mayor, I'd like to move to continue the prosecutor's position as a full-time employee position.
There's a, there's a motion in a second, all those in favors signifying by saying aye.
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 All those against? Motion carries. Thank you, Kay.
Thank you.
Item number 88, I just want to inform that application, Marion's case number 20230407, the applicant withdrew his application, and this was announced at the beginning of the meeting by Mayor Riedel.
Item number 10, summary of current events. Events by mayor, council members, and our city manager pursuant to ARS Section 38-43102K.
Anybody has anything to report?
Mayor, I, I attended the Harvest Schools wholehearted See You at the Pole event, which is a prayer event that Harvest does. That was my first time attending that. I was very glad they invited me. Pastora Elia was one of the attendees and pastors that prayed. Some of the children were also very willing to stand up and pray. So I believe that's very, something that needs to be instilled, that teaching our children that prayer is, is very powerful and much needed now with all the division going on. But it was a beautiful event, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I think I mentioned it in last meeting, but there is an art exhibition at the San Luis Library going on until September 15, or October 15, started on September 16. So if you guys have time to stop by our public library and take a look at artwork from our local students and artists in, in the city, take some pictures and share on social media to promote that art in our community. Thank you.
Comment, invitation? On the Fourth of next month, we're going to be having a work session. Very interesting, very important for the growth and the well-being of the city. I, I encourage everybody to attend, especially city employees. Get involved. This is your community, your community to be part of it. So with that, I don't have nothing else.
Mayor, I, I forgot to mention one event, if I may. Ms. San Luis has her event this Friday at the Caesar Chavez Culture Center at 6 o'clock. Ms. San Luis has the platform of domestic violence awareness, so it's her first conference. And it's called Breaking Change, so everyone's invited. Thank you.
Highly recommend and please attend. Let's support our young girls, that they go, they go up there. And we go and support them that one day, but it's a whole year. And they put a lot of work and effort into it. We should support them too. With that, and nothing else, I know nobody wants to go home, but I want to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
There's a motion in a second, all those in favor signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for your patience.